Good evening, Chagrin Falls. Thank you so much for being here. First of all, I want to honor the Ed Foundation for meeting the need of our community when we asked for this forum. Secondly, I want to thank everyone who is correctly pronouncing my last name, courtesy of my Chinese and American husband. You can think of a pirate who loves cookies. Ahoy, chips ahoy. And that's me, Laura Hoy. I am essentially running for school board because I read all of my emails, all of the PTO updates, classroom teacher messages, info about school, plays, and sports, all of it. I read everything. And I developed this habit because I wanted to fully engage with my new community when we moved here nine years ago. I wanted to make meaningful connections with other families and to be well-informed. And it took a while, but I do finally feel that my family has achieved that kind of connection. But I have always felt this way, not here and not at other times. I didn't feel connected with my... My parents tried to prevent me from marrying my husband because they had reasons rooted in racism. And I felt very disconnected after the Charlottesville riots in 2018, when I saw families that looked like mine being targeted by white supremacist protesters. And I was angry. And I stayed angry for years until I finally realized that the anger wasn't serving me, it wasn't healing, and it wasn't helping me and my family feel connected to our community. So I changed my approach, and I got curious instead. I started asking more questions and passing less judgment. I decided to focus on the positive things I can do. So I volunteered in the PTO, I tutored at Gurnee, I even dusted off my teaching degree to be a substitute in our Chagrin classrooms. I also filled out every feedback request sent by the schools so that they could better understand my family's lived experience. And that resulted in an invitation to be on the Strategic Planning Leadership Committee for last year. By inquiry group, high-quality learning, analyze data, and integrate community members to understand how we can better help prepare our future graduates for an unknown society where the jobs that they will be fulfilling don't even exist yet. And what we found is that there's a bit of a disconnect between the potential and the actual performance of our students in several areas. Our students, for example, are incredibly capable, and they are asking for more chances to learn in ways that don't include rote memorization or busy work on a Chromebook. They're asking for more authentic connections between the activities in their classroom and the applications in their real life. Our students deserve to learn and grow every day. They deserve to thrive. And we can do that in our schools by helping them find creative ways to set themselves apart. We can focus on growth and believe that achievement will follow. We can empower our teachers and trust that their experience will result in innovative and inspiring instruction. We can enhance community partnerships and give students opportunities to solve real problems that they're dealing with in their world right now. And of course, we can improve communication between parents, teachers, administrators. And if we all can get curious and ask more questions and pass less judgment, that is how we will repair the trust and transparency that we need. Will we get it right? Of course not. There will be growing pains, but let's not get frustrated. Let's work together to be engaged, informed, and connected so that we're all part of the solution. And what about the emails? Don't worry, I will keep reading all of them so that you don't have to. And I will engage with you about everything and hope that when I get emails from alums saying, "Thank you for helping me stand out in the world because of my education, Chagrin Falls Schools." Thank you.
First question. What experiences, through volunteering, work, or otherwise, have you had within the Chagrin Falls School District and local community? And how will those experiences help shape your tenure as a board member? Ms. Hoy.
I've been attending board meetings for years. Not every single one, but I've been excited to see the direction that our school has gone over the years, over the nine years that we've lived here. Last year especially, I was so thrilled to be one of three nine-please to sit on the Strategic Planning Team for High Quality Learning Experience. And I interacted so closely with administration and current board members, and we delved so deeply into the data for our district. We interviewed other vendor entities that have similar tax base, that have similar needs and populations, and were able to ask them how they're thriving. What are they doing for their students to help them stand out? And because we at Chagrin, we're doing wonderful things, but we also shouldn't be needing to reinvent the wheel for every time that we want to try to meet our students' needs the way that they're asking. So I think I have a better understanding than most average parents, and certainly than others, that the role of board member is comprehensive and also connection. Because we are also tasked with meeting our community where they are and asking them what they're worried about and how we can solve that problem and help them go forward.
The next question will start with Dr. Hoy. As a prospective board member, what do you believe are your personal limitations and how you will approach this role and how do you plan to address and overcome these challenges?
That's such a good question. It's like the job that you're telling them all of your weaknesses, and then you're supposed to turn into strength. So to do just that, one of the things I have been bored at, again, repeatedly, including several times today, is to not get too deep into the weeds when I talk with the community. Dr. Sebo and I have used this term a lot in our interactions, that I like to keep out. And sometimes I forget that not everybody else cares or actually wants to know all of the thought processes that I have about various topics relating to the board role, and especially when it comes to teachers and my personal interest, which is more early childhood education. So I will work really hard to listen more than I speak. It will be a learning curve. But and then where I would like to spend more time is getting to know some of the support organizations in sports and facilities. I was not a sports kid growing up. I was amazing nerd through and through. I've tried to organize that with my children. They are athletes, and they are far surpassing me. So I recognize that there are parts of tradition that I am not familiar with yet, and I look forward to learning about that.
To a financial question. We'll start with Dr. Sebo, then Mr. Nichols, and Ms. Hoy. Please share your thoughts on the current five-year financial forecast and how you would determine budget priorities. Dr. Hoy.
I know, you're giving me accolades. I haven't earned you a cent yet. So as we're reading the five-year plan forecast, we know that there will always, at some point, be another money. And I learned recently about one of the best ways that a board member can help bridge that feeling of concern, knowing that our district is so tied to the taxpayers. We don't have the kinds of business resources, you know, tax base that sole or warrant or other near competitors do. So I learned that the board member's job is to be thinking five years ahead, ten years ahead. And we already imagine how they can be messaging the needs of our district well ahead, well in advance, so that when the time comes for you to be voting for that on your November ballot, it doesn't feel like a surprise. And that comes with the communication piece that we're working towards. And again, as Mr. Nichols said, eighty-five percent of our budget in the school goes to teachers and support staff and their benefits. And so if we're investing in our teachers, if we're giving them the kinds of professional development that they need to help our students the most, then that will be to a benefit financially. The top three will be school partnerships, and then quality facilities, I've heard about high schooling league, and then, of course, college and career readiness.
Thank you. Please share an instance from a previous experience in which you collaborated with an individual holding a divergent viewpoint from your own, and how you navigated and resolved any differences in that particular scenario. Ms. Hoy.
I feel like the... Hold on. The question is how the divergent viewpoint... Okay. Yes. I feel like that was my entire strategic planning experience. And so a dear friend, who I now call a dear friend, she doesn't live here anymore, she moves, so I feel like I can safely give her a shout-out to Sherri Grady, Sherri Grady. She was on my strategic planning team, and I might as well do all the shout-outs. Carl Marsh is also on that team. So you know Carl, you know his approach to life, especially online. And I was a little worried. But in the end, we spent so much time working together. Sherri and I probably see eye to eye on less than thirty percent, maybe, of our general views. But by the end, like, our relationship is so strong because we recognize that what united us was so much greater than what divided us when we both had the goal of the high-quality learning experience of our students in this district. And so it was a really fulfilling experience. It was empowering. It has been something that's buoyed me during this campaign experience, especially when, you know, you feel like you're being put in boxes by other people to try and to distill your essence down into a few ideas. But I am resolute in making sure that those with differing views know that I can be a trusted person and an advocate for their students as well as my own.
Thank you.
There's an ongoing national conversation regarding the teacher's freedom to choose what is taught in a classroom, which books are read, and what topics are discussed. In addition, a major priority for all communities is to create safe places for students and teachers to learn and engage, both from a security perspective and also with regards to creating a supportive environment for every child and educator. The next set of questions will speak to these topics. So for the next one, we will start with Ms. Hoy, then Mr. Nichols, and then Dr. Sebo. The mission of the Chagrin Falls School District is to, quote, "provide an educational experience empowering students to maximize their potential." As a board member, how would you work to prioritize the unique and individual needs of each student in the district so that all students are able to maximize their potential? Ms. Hoy.
Well, just to be a little nitty-gritty, we have now adopted a strategic plan that now has a different mission statement, which is to help every student grow and thrive. Or inspire all to grow and thrive. And it's the same, but I just spent a lot of time on that, so I'm really proud of it. And to that end, what was so special about that experience and where I felt like I really had found the right place to make a difference in our schools was when we were discussing books like The End of Average. Everyone should write that down and do your homework and read it, or watch the TED Talk. Because it talks about, instead of having this portrait of a Chagrin graduate, which is a previous way of discussing, portraying our schools, it talks about having a JAPAN profile or a learner profile where our strengths over here and weaknesses over here don't cancel themselves out. They make each of us a complex and unique human being. And so part of the strategic plan and what I see already happening in our schools, if you go to Gurnee, in the hallway by the library, right now, there's a display that has all of the teachers and what they call their learning styles. "I learn best when?" "I struggle when?" "I am most successful when?" And this is going to be included in our curriculum so that our students are empowered to ask for themselves and advocate what they need to be the best person of themselves.
How do you envision balancing the Board of Education's role to ensure that curriculum standards are met with the teacher's professional freedom in shaping their classroom content?
I think that, obviously, we have laws that govern the curriculum standard. And I do, but I do believe that in Chagrin, we're uniquely positioned to allow teachers to have that freedom. But we also have to remember that we need to make sure that we're clearly communicating when what the teachers are doing so that the parents can have the opportunity to be engaged with their child's education as well. So on one hand, we say, yes, absolutely, the teachers in this district should have the freedom to teach the way that they think and instruct the way that they think. And because we have excellent personnel. But on the other hand, we have to make sure that we're communicating all of those unique video sequences from the classroom to the parents because the parents, again, each parent with their... Parents who are engaged with their kids' education allow their kids to do better. And so I think that if we, as a school board, can be supporting teachers and their ability to teach in their own unique fashion while still maintaining, meeting the state standards, and in some cases, you know, just doing just the bare minimum of what the state asks us to, because, again, we're uniquely positioned to have the freedom to do what is best for our classrooms and for our families and for our students. Thank you.
Dr. Sebo. So with the huge shift last week and kind of like the takeover of our Board of Education, I think we're going to be seeing a lot of things happening to curriculum changes that are going to trickle down and affect change in our classrooms. So I definitely want to make sure that our teachers are feeling supported when these curriculum changes are going to occur. So I'm looking ahead at some of these professional growth opportunities that I want to make sure we are selecting for our teachers while at the same time making sure that they line up with their passions. Right? I don't want our teachers to be in these professional development days that aren't speaking to, maybe they're doing classes they want to teach or something that is really going to help their PD or going to help in the instructional style that they've been looking at. So I want to give back to our teachers. I want to make sure that they are no longer having to quiet their light anymore, that they are no longer feeling like they aren't the experts in the classroom, that they haven't gone to school for this. Of course, as a parent myself, I always feel comfortable going, my teacher, whenever I have a concern and having a constructive conversation. But at the same time, I have full faith that they are the experts in the classroom, and I want them to feel that way again.
Ms. Hoy. Could you repeat the question, please, sincerely? How do you envision balancing the Board of Education's role to ensure that curriculum standards are met with the teacher's professional freedom in shaping their classroom content?
One of the aspects of the board's, of a board member's role that hasn't been discussed in these answers is shaping policy and ensuring that we, as a district, are in line with all of the state and local, state and government, federal government mandates. And a lot of that is the curriculum that is set. Not specifically curriculum, but standards. Right? There are state standards, national standards, that we must teach. And Sam alluded to this, that we are uniquely positioned, having already met such high marks, that we have a little bit more creative license, which I am so happy about. To that end, though, hiring the right, or empowering the superintendent, because we don't do hiring outside of her, hiring the people that will help her guide the district will be a huge part of empowering the teachers as well. Because as Dr. Sebo said, sitting in a boring PD is just the worst. And top-down professional development is also, doesn't serve our needs and doesn't serve the needs of our teachers. It doesn't actually really help our students necessarily either because it's a one-off, and then you don't know that it's even going to work in your own classroom. So workshop models, I envision, and I've talked to teachers, and that is what they're looking for. And also having a support staff, like building subs that when they go to those professional developments, that they know that their students are taken care of.
What is your understanding of social-emotional learning? How do you think it is being taught in our schools? And what might affect, and in what ways might affect the development of children as engaged learners? Ms. Hoy.
I was in a meeting yesterday and was speaking with a parent, and they were expressing a concern and had a question about a middle schooler who was struggling and was making bad choices and making threatening kinds of advances. And the reason I bring that up is because if we're expecting our middle schoolers and high schoolers to deal with increasing pressure from their academic experiences, from college readiness, from career readiness, and to be, you know, to have this shiny package that they have to present to the world, we need to give them the tools, starting with what we say Tier One. All instruction, all students are receiving the kinds of empowering scripts, almost, like the mental thought processes that will help them be prepared for that moment. You don't get ready for a hurricane when you see the first grade drop. Right? You start doing that when you see forecasts. So if we're dealing with, say, a middle school, that means that it needs to be in early. Because here's what it is. Our students need to feel emotionally safe enough to retain information. If they are flooded or if they're in a stressful situation, scientifically, they're not able to learn as well then if they were in a state of safety. And all the kinds of safety we're talking about, I'm sure, will come up. But I see it in a second grader's classroom. He's been given tools, so when he has a conflict with his ten-year-old sister, he's using those kinds of scripts that help him engage and advocate for himself. And that's how we get successful graduates, starting in early grades.
How would you address bullying and how would you protect middle school horrible children? Ms. Hoy.
My heart goes out to any student, any teacher that feels that they're being bullied. Because bullying doesn't only happen to the students. It happens in any variety of ways. I hope that our social-emotional learning can equip the students with the kind of foundational tools that they can go to the, that they can go to the people that they trust. In our strategic planning process, we found that even in the highest-quality epidemics, students only thrived when they knew that there was at least one adult in the building that they could trust with anything. And of course, we are, as a public school institution, our job is to support the home environment as much as possible. We have new, right, the words are... We have new counselors at the intermediate school, for example. And it's going to be an issue that we're going to deal with for the rest of time because we're stuck with the internet, and it's not going away. But we're also going to be able to find ways to teach our children how to advocate for themselves and how to have empathy and how to ask for help.
As a board member, what would you do to ensure strong communication and working relationships between the Board of Education, district administrators, teachers, and staff? As a board member, what would you do to ensure strong communication and working relationships between the Board of Education, district administrators, teachers, and staff?
So that's a comprehensive question. It requires a comprehensive answer. As someone who's not from this area, and as I mentioned in my opening statements, I wanted to know as much as possible, so I just read everything. And I know that not everybody else has time for that. And I also know that we can only process so much information at one time. So I would love to work with our communications reps, our support organizations, to find ways to give the right amount of information disseminated in the right intervals so that we don't wait until something is a problem to know that something is being done. Every time I've sat down with Dr. Metzarski, I have appreciated that when I ask a question about something like the councils that Sam mentioned, she has already started working through it and is, you know, anywhere between eighty and ninety-five percent of the way there. So we're trying to be in the process of having a comprehensive way of communicating their needs and receiving feedback in a way that can be used to improve our schools in the future. In the strategic plan, one of the most interesting things we found in some of the most successful schools in the state were tailored, regular requests for feedback in the ways that strategic planning did, where then that feedback was analyzed and used as a marker for improvement. And when that is a culture, then we will feel comfortable and ready to give the kinds of communicative help that will, yeah, no, wrap it up.
What are the top priorities you would like to accomplish during your time in office? And how will you know you were successful in achieving those priorities? Ms. Hoy.
My top priority, as you're not going to be surprised, is to ensure that all of the work, that the huge number of stakeholders put into the strategic plan, that it has brought to fruition. And I see the beginnings of that already, and I'm really excited about that. I see how, when strategic resourcing, that we can deal with the bathroom locks at the high school or any of the other massive capital expenditures that we have to undertake. I see when we have student and staff wellness, that we can do a better job of bridging emotional issues in a way that will help our teachers feel empowered and our students feel ready to learn. I appreciate that we have high-quality learning initiatives that are going to help our students stand out. And I appreciate that in all of that, communication is the key. I will know that I'm successful when we don't need another strategic plan for a long time. Ideally, if it's when I'm elected and then re-elected, just like, you know, the mentors of the women that have been serving us for the last eight years, when I am in their shoes in eight years, then, and we haven't had to have another strategic plan because it is working, because it is meant to be organic, and we are seeing that growth and our students thrive, then I will know that we have succeeded. Thank you again to the moderators of the Educational Foundation for allowing us to share our ideas with the community. And I hope that you feel Ava got to know us a little better today. I want to point out how incredibly fortunate we are as a community to care so deeply about our children's education that you are here tonight, that we have this kind of forum and this opportunity to discuss our ideas that are important to us. We are so blessed to have individuals like Sam and Danielle who are willing to put themselves out there and ask us to determine their fate by voting all because they want to serve the community. And while we may not all agree about the details of how Chagrin Falls should be run, I know that they care, and I applaud them for showing how much they care about being here tonight. So what do I wish that we could have talked about and have been asked about? For me, it would have been about being in the classrooms. I have the unique perspective of the three of us tonight, that I get to be in the classrooms of an average Chagrin Falls working school day. And we are getting down to the business of learning and growing. Of course, there are the special days, the room parent days, the Gurnee, one-school-one-book, the birthday parties, all of those things. And those are wonderful. But I'm seeing the time slice of what it looks like mid-project when our students are working together and they're solving problems and they are growing and thriving together. So don't you wish that you could know what happened in the earlier, in the higher grades, too? And I have gotten to see that, and that is why I know that I can use that perspective as a school board member. When I'm a guest teacher for your children, whether it's an eighth-grade Spanish, sixth-grade math, or fourth-grade E.L.A., I'm helping these students engage a productive struggle and seeing the support staff and all of the moving parts, the specialists that are working to meet our students' needs. And overall, I think we are doing a fantastic job, which is evident in all of our recent awards, right? The five stars, the national accolades. Those are incredible things. And so my request to you is this. Can we please view those high rankings as a floor and not a ceiling? As a place to start from and not arrive? Can we please not bask in the light of our five stars for too long? Let's use this as an opportunity to evaluate where we can meet students that still feel like they're being missed. So I know that Chagrin Falls is an incredibly safe and nurturing place to raise a family and a wonderful place to call home. And I thank you for welcoming me and my family into your homes and to your safe spaces and into your schools. I look forward, as a board member, to work with you and make Chagrin Falls the best possible version of itself. And we will do that together by supporting our schools as a whole community. Thank you, and I hope I have a vote.
There are several people to thank for making this night possible. Liz O'Neill, thank you for agreeing to co-moderate with me. Thank you to the Board of Education for offering the Ed Foundation the opportunity to participate in the democratic process in such a meaningful way. Laura, Sam, and Danielle, thank you for your participation. Ben Needham, thank you for providing him. Ben Needham, thank you for providing us with baby services. And to all of the school faculty who so willingly helped with setting up the planning. Chagrin Falls T.D. for providing us with security. And to all of you for being such a kind and respectful audience and for sharing your time tonight. All free candidates will now be available in lobby for a brief meet greet, if you would like. And please also visit the Ed Foundation table in lobby if you would like to learn more about our organization or to maybe get to support our mission. I'd also like to remind you of the key upcoming dates for the election. Tomorrow, the 10th, is the deadline to register for voting, if you haven't already done so. Wednesday, the 11th, early in-person voting begins. And Tuesday, November 7th, is election day. Polls are open from 6:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. Wish you all a safe trip home, and thank you again. Good night, everyone.